This is our instructional committee meeting. And item number two is acceptance of the minutes of the instructional committee meeting of May 1st, 2017. Any discussion? So we can take consensus, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed?
Well, no, we're just, just, no.
Yes.
Don't need to do that.
I'll save that for a couple of weeks.
Yeah, that's it.
Get ahead of myself here.
Yes.
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 Yes, okay. And B is proposed approval of revised health education graduation standards and performance indicators.
Are we in that one?
Huh?
You missed A.
Oh, I missed A.
Put your glasses.
Now I'll try the glasses. Let me try it again.
On the Italian in the high school.
Ah, proposed adoption of new high school textbook for Italian 1 through 4, Centieri.
I have a couple copies, this is the teacher's edition, so if you peruse it, you'll see answers written in, so don't cheat.
Are you going to give your presentation in Italian?
I wish. That would be, that would be very good.
Yeah, would be nice.
So we actually looked at two textbook series, the McGraw-Hill, Gray Hill textbook and Vista Higher Learning Centieri. There aren't, there aren't an abundance of textbooks out there for Italian. And we ended up, oh, I'll just, thanks Evan. We ended up overwhelmingly in favor of Vista Higher Learning Centieri textbook. It very much lends itself to something that we felt like we could chunk up over our four years of study versus needing to buy, needing to potentially buy and then hopefully buy in the future, a book and its successor. We felt like it was less busy than other options. And two of the major things that we loved about Centieri, well Vista Higher Learning is a textbook company that only writes textbooks for world language, which is really, really cool. It was started by world language teachers who, who very much understand the comprehensive input idea of language learning. So there's equal weight given to the three modes of communication. And when you look at other textbooks, you really feel like, okay, these are people kind of writing a world language textbook that aren't world language people. But the, the fact that culture is very much embedded into the textbook rather than sort of an add-on at the end of a chapter, was a huge plus for the Italian teachers. And the fact that the three modes of communication are given equal weight was another huge plus for the teachers. And there's a wealth of online resources. It's, it's a phenomenal company and a phenomenal series, so we felt very strongly about the Centieri textbook.
Is there an audio mode that's part of the online?
There is.
There is.
So you can click words and hear them pronounced. Teachers can set how many, how many tries they want a student to have for a given assessment. So, yeah, there is, and there's a really neat online, if, if you look at our comparison, our comparison chart, or not comparison chart, I guess, but where we assess strengths and weaknesses of the series, the one weakness that we had, and it was really kind of a stretch to just come up with a weakness, was that the audio component chronicles a college student as she studies abroad. And so we thought, all right, is that maybe kind of a far reach for the kids to associate with? But it's, it's authentic. She's an American student studying abroad, so it's authentic, and if anything, we felt like it was a nice reach for the kids to, to think, wow, this is something I might be doing in just a handful of years. So maybe not in one year, but in a handful of years, I might be doing this. And, and so there's a very strong audio component to the Centieri text.
Is it, is it used extensively?
Yes.
By the students, it is.
Yes, yep. And in our proposal for the purchase is a six or seven year, a six-year license for the student addition online.
I wonder if there's an Italian language version of Alexa.
Oh.
Be interesting, huh?
There is.
For conversation?
Ooh.
Dialogue?
Or that's a good Shark Tank idea.
Huh?
Oh, there is.
I said there is. No, really, right? It knows everything else, but it would be neat for conversation to practice it and.
Yeah.
Alexa was the answer to the crossword puzzle on Sunday.
Was it, really? Not as much fun as going to Italy, of course, but.
I know.
The number is still good for your classes?
Yeah, the numbers are very strong. We have five solid classes at both high schools. Actually, there are six sections at Sheehan and five at Lyman Hall. Yeah, so we have a Spanish teacher at Sheehan who always teaches Spanish classes and then whatever the overage is of Italian classes. So it varies between, she has one or two sections of Italian each year, which is, which is really great, given, given the size of the student body and the, the number of languages that we offer. Italian is still really alive and well.
Good.
Yeah.
Good to hear.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Should we take consensus?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now to B. Proposed approval of revised health education graduation standards and performance indicators.
So I'm going to present these for Tony tonight because he has a baby due this week. And so he's not here. So I'm going to start with the health graduation standards and performance indicators. There are three graduation standards for health. There's accessing health information, communication skills, and decision-making and goal-setting. They are banded indicators. You'll see that there's a second, fifth, eighth, and 12th grade column. So there's a K2, a 3.5, a middle school, and a high school. And I don't know if anybody had any particular questions on those.
I just want, the teachers obviously were involved in creating this, right?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Okay, and then, sorry.
Okay, so we take consensus on that?
Yes.
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 And yes, thank you.
Can I just state, we have several content areas going forward to the board for indicators and standards. And just to give the board an idea of what the process is, these have been fully vetted through departmental meetings. The teachers have worked extensively to refine and tweak the vocabulary used and what the standard means and what the indicator means. Then they go through management team, then they go through all three levels of the mastery-based learning committee, then they go to the district leadership team before coming to you. So they are reviewed quite a bit, discussed extensively before coming to you for approval. So I just wanted to kind of set that context before you go into the physical education, the English language arts, and the math.
Okay, but then, then I do have a question. Through that process, once, once it gets to a point where they feel they're ready to bring it to the board, are all the teachers that would be actually having to implement this, given an opportunity to see it before we make the final decision?
By the time it goes to mastery-based learning committee, it's been well-vetted through the entire department. So, you know, going through, mastery-based learning committee and the district leadership team looks at it through the process, or through the lens of mastery-based learning, looking at the progression of the standards when it comes to specific content. That's where those department teachers and the management team really put their skill level into, does this make sense for our particular content and how we're teaching it to ensure that students can progress towards mastery of the different indicators?
Okay, thanks.
So these are all foundation for mastery-based learning. When do we expect we're going to have mastery-based learning fully implemented?
Sure, I believe that going back to our presentation in the fall after we had to take a reset type of scenario, we were looking at the high school, most implement, most of it being implemented by the year 2020. So we were looking at taking, we gave ourselves three and a half years, if you all recall, this year being a half year and then three years out. I think that as we continue to evolve in this process, I think the key thing that we're decide, we decided and under Kerry's leadership and working with the curriculum team, that we'd want to make sure that we live with something for a year, don't make changes during the school year, ask for feedback, as Kathy, you just alluded to, ask for feedback, and then implement the changes in the fall. So they want to live with this, these documents this coming school year, as well as do more work on other aspects of mastery-based learning, and then move forward with revisions. So depending on how things go, we don't, that's, that's the longest part, that's the longest possible opportunity. But I think that there are some areas that we're seeing move a little quicker, and, but again, we'll take the lead from teachers and administrators, because it's that, it's that balance. You know, there are certain departments that, at certain levels, that do, that have appeared to, to risen to a level of, of moving quicker, that we want to honor those educators, but we also want to make sure that if we're going to honor them, that we're not, you know, that we're not upsetting the apple cart in another area, because the things have to move somewhat in a sequence. So as we move forward, I think we'll be bringing, at some point next year, I can't say it's the fall or, or the middle of the year or the spring, an update of the calendar as it relates to our launch of Watson in the fall as a pilot, as a pre-launch, shall I say, with some of our staff, that we're, we're going to make a final decision this Thursday on that, that then we will share with staff and with board. So that all factors into it. So, but again, the, the ultimate goal, you know, the long-term was 2020, but again, we always want to honor, you know, the process.
But so far, so good.
So far, I, I think that the key thing this year, I have to say, was, you know, we all could acknowledge we got off to a bumpy start with the redo-retake and the habits of work. I think that we were able to rechart and regroup, recharter course, regroup around that. I think that the structures that have now been put in place by having mastery-based learning teams at each grade level, it's open to anyone who wants to come. You know, some people come one meeting, they might not come another, but that's okay, because it's based on their schedule and their, their ability to attend. But each of those groups, under the direction of Kerry, has now a member from each of our schools. So bless you, true. So each member from the school is, is responsible to go back to their school's faculty meeting that month to give an update. So again, teachers who are at the faculty meetings, which they all attend, are hearing the same update, there's the same minutes. It's all being processed in that manner, so that next year, again, it'll be a, a fine working system. So I think we're, you know, we're still, you know, constantly looking for feedback. We just had our district leadership meeting today, and, you know, we'll keep Kathy posted, but we had members, yeah, we had. It's okay, we'll, we'll get you. So the thing is that we have some, we want to get feedback, so we have a plan to get feedback from, again, from staff and students. We're really, we, we're excited, we have two students on the district leadership team right now that are phenomenal. And so they're going to start using their own social networking powers to, to get information out to their fellow students. So I, yeah, I think we're, you know, again, is it perfect? Absolutely not. But are we?
It's never going to be.
Are we?
Huge transformation.
Exactly. Are we in a better place than we were in October? Absolutely, and thanks to the hard work of the curriculum department and even Kerry's leadership in the short amount of time. She's just done a tremendous job.
That's great, thank you. So, any other, any other questions? Should we take consensus?
Yes.
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 And yes. Okay, item D, proposed adoption of new high school mathematics textbook.
So I do have a teacher's edition sample and a student edition sample. This will be coming right out.
Jeez, in the FED, in the FISA, is there a part of the curriculum how to fix broken backs? These are incredible.
They are, I know. The nice thing about these is they also come with a student workbook each year. That's part of our six-year license if we move forward with this. So most of the transporting that students will have to be, will be the, the workbook as opposed to the actual textbook. So that is one positive. So in the area of mathematics, our high school textbooks are very old, geometry being the oldest. So you'll see that we're replacing an edition from 1990 as well as an edition from 1997. So it really was time to start looking at textbooks in the area of math at the high school. We reviewed two textbooks, both newer and both aligned with Common Core. We put both textbook series through pretty rigorous review process, where I had teachers that taught geometry from both high schools involved. And our management team also was kind of leading that charge as far as looking at the textbooks. Ultimately, a couple of things that made us go with this one over the Glencoe is that this uses a web-based application, GeoGebra and Desmos, as opposed to Geometry Sketchpad, which is an additional cost. And students could not access as easily. We'd have to go to a laptop cart as opposed to a Chromebook in order to use that geometry sketchpad. So this, as far as the applications that go with this textbook, it was much easier to access. The other thing is that our, we did have two classrooms at each high school actually piloting this book this year. So they were very familiar with it, and they felt like the online version and all the online accessible, accessibility was much easier for students to access than the version for the other textbook.
Okay.
So, and, and looking at this, I'm a little puzzled as to, it looks like Ms. Duthy endorsed it, but I'm not seeing endorsement from the principal of Lyman Hall.
So that would be because the version of this adoption form that I had did not, the last time I came here, it didn't ask for both principals, so I didn't ask Mr. Corso. Ms. Duthy's part of our management team, which is why she was part of that endorsement process.
Okay, I was just puzzled because that was left blank, so.
Yeah, that was not on my form, so I apologize.
Okay.
Shauna?
Is, he's on board with it, though? Have you?
All of his teachers are. He, I did not actually formally ask him. In some of our other areas, social studies, I think was the most recent one that I can remember, we've been moving towards going and getting books just for the classroom and then sending the students, is that what we did in this situation? We did not, I did get two costs proposals. One is that there's only a $2,000 difference between the two proposals, as opposed to a textbook for every student. Yeah. So it was $53,000 as opposed to the $55,000.
I like the textbook for every kid.
Which is why I figured for the $2,000, it was worth it to go that way. So. The problem is, nobody's going to bring this home.
Oh, poor me.
Oh, nobody is going to bring it home.
Well, that's the teachers.
They must own car suitors with companies also.
I've never brought my books home. We, we have the same version of textbooks at our middle school, and my daughter, you know, at times for homework and things, she just brings home her workbook, but when there is something that she needs to review and look at closer, she does bring the textbook home. So it's not something that they're transporting on a regular basis, but when they do need to, they do bring it home. It's, it's, there's, if you brought home all your books for all your classes in high school. No, and, well, the AB schedule helps that, too. So.
Chrissy, what do you think the big differences will be in the learning of geometry as a result of this update?
A lot of the inquiry based in the online applications that I was sharing, the geometries, I'm sorry, the GeoGebra and the Desmos is probably the biggest.
So how is that done now? I mean, is there a lot more covered?
Right now, we're doing a lot of paper and pencil. Exploration. Yeah, and we have, and our teachers are using some of the GeoGebra that they've created, but now with this textbook, some of those are already created and they can just access them, as opposed to having to create them themselves.
Great. Any other questions?
Yeah, is this a fairly new company, this Big Ideas?
Yes, it's, since 2014 and a lot of, with the Common Core, they transitioned some of it to the Big Ideas. And it's our middle school series as well that we have.
Just a quick question, they have, do they have online assessments, too?
Yes.
So that's potentially things that could be downloaded and, and data could be uploaded from them?
Yes.
Okay, because that's what we're finding with other districts that we work with in our relationship with IBM. Big Ideas is one of the textbooks that definitely has been utilized across the country.
Yes.
Do the teachers get their feedback on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's great. Excellent. Anything else? Shall we?
Yes.
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 And yes. Thanks, and while you're here.
My second?
Yeah. E is the proposed approval of revised mathematics graduation standards and performance indicators.
Yes. So in the area of mathematics, our teachers have been using these this year. And so we've been gathering feedback from the teachers as they've been using them throughout the year. What you will see as far as major changes on the first page, under graduation standard number and quantity, we added the third bullet there for grade two is a new indicator. When we met with the grade two teachers in April, we realized we did have a gap in our fluency standards. So if you notice, grade one is fluently add and subtract within 10, and then in grade three, it jumps to 1,000. So we, we had that gap that we were missing along the way. So we did add that third indicator for grade two. The other biggest change you will see is in our high school indicators for all of the graduation standards. Originally, we were attempting to write indicators for Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, course-specific. But the issue with that is, these indicators are for all students, and not all students take that same progression in high school. So what we did is we went to just high school mathematics indicators that students can achieve through different course sequences. So they don't have to take the same mathematics courses in order to meet standard on these indicators. So in each of our graduation standards, you will see that high school now is not course-specific, and they're just banded indicators there. Yes.
Okay, help me here.
Yes.
So, and let's say the first page, number and quantity.
Yes.
So if I'm a third grader, those five indicators, if, some, this is what we expect a third grader to have accomplished at the end of third grade. Is that mastery?
Yes.
Now, how, how do we, how do we determine that they've mastered those things?
Well, we haven't determined that as a district yet, but right now, we are assessing those formatively throughout the school year, within our curriculum documents.
So eventually, you expect to do something more than formative, something?
Well, they are also, at times, they're hit on in our summative assessments also. So there's different opportunities to assess those indicators throughout the year. But again, as a district, we haven't determined what mastery is and what determines ultimately that they met it.
According to the process that we follow, you need to know what, you need to quantify in terms of mastery before you can actually quantify it. So now that we have what we want to quantify.
Right.
Now we're at that stage where that's the next part of the conversation. But it's hard to say what mastery is, if, is if you don't know what you're looking for.
All right, so now we know what we're looking for.
So now that's the next step.
I guess what we're looking for now, the next step is how are you going to determine?
Correct.
Right.
That's been accomplished.
Absolutely right, that's the, that's the next step.
Now, to me, that's going to be a very difficult task.
Absolutely, that's why we're not.
Because you have children of all different learning abilities in a classroom.
Absolutely.
So are you going to have to differentiate the, the method in which you do that?
There's a.
Or is it going to be universal for everybody in that room?
No, there's a variety of different things that we're looking at, and that's why we're, we had that partnership with South Portland, because they've been doing this now for a few years. So that's our next step, is to really looking at, this fall is, on professional development in August that we're drafting right now, or that Kerry's drafting with the staff, is looking at assessment in general, formative versus summative, ongoing assessment. What, what is the assessment portfolio, so to speak, that's going to speak to whether or not a student may ma, achieve mastery? But we have to, we have to really, like you said, it's going to take time. And that's why really, we want to, and we also need to empower the teachers to be part of that conversation.
Oh, God, yeah. And are we going to have, are report cards going to sort of reflect these things? How is that?
What happens is that the, the report cards that we've seen, and you're going to, next year, it's really, I think you're going to start seeing more of the decision-making process having to come forward to you as to what that's going to look like. What you see is that it's more granular, and that what you, in most districts with mastery-based learning, you talk about interim reports versus report cards. Report cards at the end of the year, this is one way, not saying that we're deciding this. But some districts will just report out at the end of the year on the standards and not the indicators. So it's kind of like a cumulative, summative thing for parents to know that their child met mastery on those standards. But then during the course of the year, like say, for example, in our elementary and, and middle school level, there's trimesters. The first and second trimester, parents would get information on the indicator progress. So we have to balance that, and that's why we're, you know, we have a few things that we have to look at. First of all, really empowering the teachers to be part of the process of identifying what needs to be considered in that pool. But then also, how are we going to communicate that? And again, our goal is that most likely either the, the September or October instructional committee meeting, we could share with you a little bit of the, the initial launch for Watson, so you could see what it looks like from a teacher standpoint, which then will transcend into a parent and a student look, which is, gives all of this information for the teacher on an on-demand basis. So, you know, there's a lot of pieces, and we were also deliberate in that, too, Mike, because with the identification of how, what mastery looks like, we need to be able to share that in an appropriate way with parents. So, you know, that's where we're taking this very, very slowly, because we don't want to rush, give out a product that doesn't make sense to the, the end user, which is the family. So you're absolutely right, but we needed to quantify first what we needed to have them demonstrate.
So are there any other area districts that are implementing this one about the same time line?
Well, actually, ahead of us is, is Windsor Locks. So we've been working with Windsor Locks, we've had sent, we've sent people to Windsor Locks. Farmington has implemented at the high school level and has implemented at the, somewhat at the middle school and elementary. New Fairfield is very, very much so implemented at the middle school level. There is a, I mean, we, there's over 30 districts or close to 50 districts.
So we're part of a consortium, so we don't have to.
Yeah, we've been part of the consortium now for about four years, going on five years, the League of Innovative Schools, which has a Connecticut consortium, plus we have all of the New England states. Shauna and Roxanne actually attended the conference with many people in this room. This, they had it in, in Connecticut this year, which was nice, so we didn't have to travel. So we were able to, you know, literally double, if not triple, our participation because of that. So the consortium's been around, there is the, the state legislative, the state legislator is contemplating some legislation from the governor, mandating mastery-based learning and mastery-based graduation diploma for, I don't know what class, you could kind of put a line and then they'll put it in there. So it is, you know, some states have taken a very different approach than Connecticut. New Hampshire mandated right off, excuse me, Maine mandated right off the bat. New Hampshire took a little bit more of an organic approach, but is getting to that same point. Connecticut has definitely started out more grassroots, and now is getting to the point where they're looking at some statutory requirements.
So do you think we'll be able to adopt most of what we're going to do from others that have done it? Are we going to have to create it ourselves?
It's a combination. I think that, you know, again, speaking to Kathy's questions, and I know the other educators on the panel, panel in terms, or on the board, Mike and, and Pat, we want teachers to own it and have their own voice in the process, so just to take it from another district and say, this is your stand, these are your standards, that doesn't usually work too well. So, you know, I think that that's part of it, and also you want, by them being involved in it so, in it such a detailed manner, they're able to talk to what it looks like.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I wouldn't think that means you have to create it, right? I mean, they should still be involved by, by looking at what others have done.
Well, and sometimes, yeah, and sometimes it is borrowing from others or sharing. So, you know, we're educators, so we do like to do that. But it is, it's a tedious amount of work. I mean, it, and that's, and I think that's the point, and that's the value in this, is that it's actually making us all take a moment to look at the practices. So it's not just about the outcomes, but it's about the practices, because the other layer to this, which, you know, the administrators are working on with our teachers right now, there was just a tremendous amount of feedback given from teachers on the instructional strategies. So you can say you want students to know and be able to do these things, but how does that look like in a classroom? And that's the, that's really the, the core of the work that we talk about is instruction. So that's where the time comes in, because you want to have everybody gain a deeper understanding, share with each other. It has to be that collaborative process. So yes, we have borrowed, we have had the consortium come in and speak to our curriculum people, as well as teachers, administrators. And so there, we definitely have borrowed. But again, I, I think what, as much as we would like to say that you could just kind of take it and, and say, you'll use this, it doesn't feel right for, for, for most educators.
I mean, usually, stuff I say, we look to best practices. You have people involved, but you look to best practices rather than create it yourself, because it can be so overwhelming. You never know what you're going to, when it's going to get done, and, and it can really distract from all the day-to-day stuff.
True, and I think that's why, the couple of things that we've learned through the process is, number one, that we need to set, we set, need to set a process in place, that we need to stick to our process. So our process that is definitely in place from here going forward is that we will do work during the school year, but the work that is done during the school year will not be reflected in the work in the classroom until the following year. Because the definition of insanity is keep changing things over and over again. So for our, for, for students and for adults. So I think that now that we have the clearly articulated process and the approach, I think the goal is to get the work done. I, I do believe we've probably taken a little bit more of a methodical approach than most places. But again, that has to fit the. But again, that has to fit the needs of the community in which it's situated. So I think we probably would have been in more of, much more of a challenging circumstance or set of situations if we tried to push forward too quickly. We saw that this fall and I think we learned from that experience and, you know, we want to have the most success.
Yeah, I think I brought this up already last year. How, what's the metric that we're going to use, you know, at the end of this? In other words, how are we going to assess this new generation doing mastery base?
So as I just answered to Mike, like fifteen minutes ago.
I mean, looking forward, out of high, I mean, how do we know that this is?
The answer's not defined yet, Pat, in terms of our district. I think that when you look at other districts, if you, you know, take some time, look at Adams Fifty in Colorado, they've been doing it now since the, probably the early two thousands. Students have had more authentic learning opportunities, they've had more relevance in terms of their learning. They've been able to transfer that into the world of work right away, as well as the university system.
That's what I'm thinking.
So that's the stuff that you're seeing. If you look at New Tech High School, I don't know if you came to see the video earlier this year. Now I'm just going to blank my, High Tech, High Tech Ed, the video that we showed on Most Likely Succeed. Which talked about High Tech High School out in California. Again, those students, because of a mastery-based learning environment, have been more equipped to have the social emotional skills and the content and knowledge skills to be more successful in the college as well as workplace.
I was just going to say, would it be like reflective in like SAT scores?
It was definitely reflective in their SAT scores, they were extremely competitive. And then there also their acceptance to universities.
I was going to say, success in college.
And job placement.
That's, yeah, that would be a key.
So we need to, the thing that we need help with.
Yeah.
And this is why it's, it's kind of exciting if there, if there is some additional help at the state level, is that then we could put that into the matrix. So when you look at your school indicators, like our school report cards, we could start looking at those indicators and use a benchmark and start seeing the increases or areas of improvement. So you're right on target, I just can't do that on my own. So we need to work together on that with other.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Yep.
Good, any other questions? See what you're starting?
Math always gets us going.
Right.
Yes?
Sorry, yes?
Yes.
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 And yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and next, proposed approval of revised ELE, ELA, I'm sorry, graduation standards and performance indicators. Be back.
I'm back. So similar to math, the English Language Arts teachers have used a version of the graduation standards and indicators for this year. And this is based on feedback, extensive feedback K-12 from the teachers over the course of the year with them trialing them out. So what you have in front of you is our proposed draft going into the seventeen eighteen school year for them to use in their units. So we have three graduation standards in English Language Arts. We have foundational reading skills, which is a K-five graduation standard on the first page. We have one graduation standard two in reading comprehension, interpretation, and analysis. And we have graduation standard three in writing. We followed the Common Core State Standards very closely on these. So they are grade-specific, except up in the high school where they match the standards and are banded nine-ten and eleven-twelve. We did make some revisions, but nothing fairly significant. So I don't, I don't know if anybody had any questions about the ones that you see a copy of.
Any questions? Take consensus, Mike?
Yes.
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 And yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And G is a proposed adoption of new high school theater section one, unit one.
Yes, so this is a new elective course in the English Language Arts Department at the high school. We had proposed deletion of a former dramatic arts course that was an older elective. And replaced it with a theater one and a theater two sequence. So this is the first unit in theater one, which is going to be running for the first time next fall. It was written by a teacher from each high school who's going to be teaching the course along with myself. And this is the first unit on preparation. And so kind of giving students an introduction to theatrical concepts. They have a new textbook that was adopted and purchased already. So they use that as a, as a guiding factor in terms of the resources that were available for support. There's actually a lot of nice authentic tasks that were a part of the resources to kind of get students involved in the, in the more of the real, different aspects of theater. So I don't know if anybody has any questions on this unit.
Karen?
I just have a clerical correction, which we'll straighten out later.
Anything else? Take consensus, Mike?
I did, I always do.
Yes.
Okay, Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, because it looks like a lot of fun.
This does look like a lot of fun. Actually, what I really was not to, I know you already took consensus on it, but this particular unit was very cool because we not only used English Language Arts standards, but some of the new National Core Arts standards in there as well, which we don't often get a chance to delve into. So it is actually a really neat combination. Um, it's running at Lyman Hall for sure and I think we were still on the fence at Sheehan in terms of if we were going to be able to run it with numbers.
Okay, and item H is proposed additions to World Literature Anchor Text List.
Okay, so this item is actually, there's a lot of paperwork here for, it's actually an addition to, so the unit that you have here on World Literature Grade Ten is already an approved unit. But we included it so that you can see the anchor text list together with one of the units. We are proposing to add two additional titles to the World Literature Anchor Text List, which are actually on the bottom of the first page of the text list. Highlighted, even though it's hard to see in the black and white copy. We're, we're proposing to add Cry the Beloved Country and The Good Earth. When we reviewed this curriculum a couple of weeks ago, we were really just, teachers are very happy with the curriculum, but we were looking to try to add a few more multiple perspectives. So Cry the Beloved Country will add a South African-based text. And The Good Earth, we were trying to incorporate more of an eastern perspective. So we continue to look for different titles that we can add to this curriculum.
I just have to say, of all the books I read in high school, as soon as I saw The Good Earth, I had an immediate flashback and that was like one of my favorites, so it's nice to see.
Oh, good. That was the same reaction that our writers had as well, yeah. Yeah, so. So this is sort of an ongoing search on the part of our, we're constantly looking at what do we have available in the schools? What additional nonfiction articles? Because with world literature, there's so much. We're, we're constantly trying to find a good balance of multiple perspectives to incorporate. So that is really the addition to this particular item, those two titles.
Great, thanks. Any questions, folks? Shall we, Mike?
Yes.
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 And yes. Thank you, Karen. Okay, so.
I have one more item. I'm still here.
Proposed adoption of new high school course Journalism Two.
Okay, so this is my final item. This is a proposal for a new course. We currently have a journalism course running at both high schools. It's an English Language Arts elective. And this is a proposal to offer a Journalism Two elective that would be functioning within the same environment as Journalism One. For students who've already taken Journalism One successfully and are interested in further, furthering their study of the field of journalism, sort of under the apprenticeship of the teacher in the classroom and taking on a leadership role within the classroom. So the teacher would differentiate more in-depth topics for the students. While these Journalism Two students would also take the lead in assisting with the Journalism One section of the course. So it's a nice leadership opportunity for them to continue their study, sort of within the same environment and, and help us expand the, the course.
Do we still have like our own channel? Didn't the school have Channel One? Yeah.
Middle school, middle school.
It depends on what. Are you asking about?
We still have it, it's something we still use.
We have a public access channel, Channel.
Nineteen?
Nineteen, which we do still use and every so often we'll put some programming out. It, the challenge is that it's, it's much more, I, I think the students and staff tend to use YouTube a lot more, it's a lot easier.
Oh, okay.
To upload, so we do have a Wollingford Public Schools YouTube station. So, yeah, so that, it's, it's one of those things. I know public access is having its own challenges because it doesn't get the viewership on cable. First of all, you have to find it and then secondly, it's just, people are going to less traditional resources.
I guess it was. No, it's not.
Yeah.
It's not on demand, that makes it difficult. I was just thinking, I remembered when I was in high school, and this is kind of what I had originally thought it was, that in the morning, we had a morning announcement on the television.
We do have, well, we have Channel One, which is at the middle school, which we still subscribe to. But then we also have our own morning news show.
You still have.
Which is, yeah, the both middle schools still have Channel One. But all of our, our two middle schools have a morning news broadcast. Also, Sheehan High School does it through their YouTube station and then Parker Farms does it also. So there are the actual student-run broadcasts and that's continuing to grow.
I was just thinking that with this course, it would be kind of, because it sounds like you're, you're looking for a more mature, interested journalist at this stage.
Yes.
And then that would be something that would be kind of an interesting use of real-world, hands-on skills. Because if you want to be a journalist, more than likely, as much as you'd love to think that they'd be working at a newspaper.
Right.
It's less likely than being in broadcast journalism.
Yeah, and, and the course actually, well, let me put it this way, this is the proposal. So if it goes through, we would write the curriculum and get more in-depth, but really does have a focus on multimedia journalism. So we would incorporate all of those aspects in more, you know, in-depth manner.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else, folks? Mike?
No, yes.
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 And yes. Let's see, do I have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And item J is the proposed adoption of high school course outlines for computer programming, introduction to computer science, web tools, web design for business, international business, design and production of custom wood products.
So. So within this item, this is a reflection of much of the work that we're currently doing and have been working on this year. So we wanted to present to you the outlines for the courses, just to kind of get ahead of where we're at as we continue to work this spring and this summer to have complete, fully-developed course. But those that you have before you are the outlines for these courses.
Stupid question, do we still have a wood shop?
We have two wood shops. We have a wood shop at Lyman Hall and at Sheehan High School.
I feel like I should have known that.
And they have the, the intro to wood and basically the advanced wood.
Does it tie into that or am I looking at something differently?
It, that, this particular design and production of custom wood products is the second course. So that is an update within that. So there is design and production of wood products, which is the first course. And the second course is the custom wood products, which really gives the opportunities for them to expand their skills, stronger machine use, more focused on custom joinery and assembly of more complex wood products.
Yes, I'm sure.
That's not an easy thing to do. Do we teach logic as a portion of Algebra One? Because it says on, I'm sorry, computer programming, you have Algebra One. And I can't remember, it's been so long, where logic fell when I was in school. So I was wondering, is that a portion of Algebra One or is it taught somewhere else?
I'm not a fully.
College.
We could refer to our math coordinator for the specifics.
But logic is built into most of our math courses.
Okay.
You'll see it most, a bigger emphasis in geometry when you start thinking about proving pyramids and completing proofs, but it is intertwined into all of our math courses.
Okay, because I know that for programming in particular, understanding the basics of logic is key.
Absolutely.
Right, and that's one of, one of the things that we've discussed quite at length because the requirement was always that you need to have completed Algebra One. But we have had students who maybe are not as strong in algebra, but are still successful. So in the outline, we actually say that it's recommended, but it would be, because we, we do believe we can coach the kids through the programming. But that is a big part, forming algorithms to solve problems, using computer codes is the premise of the entire course. But we have kids that are, are doing coding and programming in the middle school on their own without ever having gotten to algebra.
Well, because I'm not, algebra is, is kind of a little bit separate from logic. It's not, I, I understand, you know, the way you're breaking it down and stuff like that, but logic is a little different and that's the language of computers. So I could see how some kids would be naturally inclined to think that way, it makes sense, you know?
Right, and, and we also have, in, beginning in the third grade, kids are being presented with that problem-solving way of thinking. In the computer classes, we have all of the, the Makerspace classes, which is presenting the, you know, design thinking and it all adds to it.
That, that I know we do, we do well, I guess, okay, so, and I think that we're probably taking longer on this point than I originally intended. I was thinking of if then, because of the language, the language specific to a logic math course, was what I was getting at.
You'll find that's more in a geometry than in Algebra One. But again, that, that logic of proving things was built into our math curriculum all the way through. So it's not something where Algebra One would be a prerequisite.
Excellent, thank you. So, Rob, hi.
Hi.
What other languages do we, computer languages do we teach? Do we have pro, courses for?
Right now, it's focused on Python with the expansion of going into Java, which would be more advanced.
I was going to say.
So that's our goal to, no, we're not there. As we try to build capacity, both within our students and our staff, to move their. We, we have seen that some schools that have instituted like a Java class or, which there is AP opportunities for that, that many schools have added or the college board has added a secondary course before it because they've seen kids get to that level and then still not have the success in Java. So we want to be certain that our, our kids and everyone is well-prepared.
So this Python language, what, do you know what industries actually use it?
It's a, it's a great foundation language. I can't specifically say who programs in Python. It's an object-oriented programming, which is really used a lot with games and, but it's, it's a very accessible language, but it's a powerful language as well.
Do we look at other lines? Why, I'm just curious why we chose this one over the other languages?
Pretty much, it's the standard for a good beginning, full language. And, and most, most of the time, when you do begin to program within a language, once you go through that, you can apply the concepts. It, it applies to kind of the logic and algorithmic, algorithmic thinking that would apply to anything where, any other languages where you start to, you just have to learn different syntax.
It's the Latin of computer programming, right? Isn't Latin the basis for most of the romance languages? And so that's always how I look at that.
You could go through and say, well, should we use one or another? But Python is common and it's very accessible and it's a good entry point for students.
Okay, so I'm very heartened to see these outlines for these particular courses so that we have a, the essential questions and the enduring understandings made clear about these certain courses. And of course, I have a couple of clerical corrections, which I'll hand over.
Rob, regarding algorithms, I don't, I don't know if you were here when I mentioned it once before, but are you familiar with predictive analytics?
Yes, not in depth, but I understand the concept and.
And I'm, I'm seeing a lot of that. I've got like three projects going on now with it. And it seems as though that would be something of interest and perhaps opportunity. And, um, it seems as though that would be something of interest, interest and perhaps opportunity for, for students in, in these sort of courses.
One of, one of the courses, the introduction to computer science has a, an entire, uh, unit that's devoted to big data and the concept of data and how it's being used, which would immediately go right into it. And that's the premise of the introduction for computer science, is that while you can get into a programming language, for example, like Python, but the introduction to computer science is not about programming, it's understanding the human and computer interactions. It's understanding the ethics of using computers and designing for computers, it's understanding users and their interfaces and the concepts of data and how data is used. Um, it's, to me, when I was going through that particular unit, I am especially excited, um, by some of the content that is in the unit on data, which would go and speak to exactly what you're referring to. Um, I, I just get energized when I start to think of the future and what, it, it would scare many people, but it's like.
Yeah.
Just makes me say, wow, what's happening.
Yeah, it's, it's becoming a real big field very quickly. And it's now determined data scientists, because I said, who the heck's doing all this stuff? Because it's learning as it goes along, they're refining algor- algorithms, algorithms using probabilities.
It's all the stuff that we have with our N light and all that.
Yeah, we, we, actually, I just, I said to Carrie, we need to make note when they're here on Thursday to ask if, next year, if you could kind of give us a timeline of when you're gonna be, they're gonna be teaching that section, if we could either have them Skype with people from IBM.
Yeah, that would be a great connection, yeah.
That would be kind of an interesting thing from Austin, have the design team talk about the analytics.
Yeah. If you're interested, there's a YouTube video, it's called The Human Face of Big Data, it's a PBS, uh, fifty-two minute thing. You watch it and you start seeing what people are doing with data, it's remarkable. It's, but that's in the introduction to computer science course.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Just one, just sorry.
Yep.
You mentioned, um, ethics in the computer science course. Are we talking about, um, teaching them a little bit about some of the modern day issues going on in regards to data storage and?
Yep, it, it goes into the responsibility of, of stuff like data storage, responsible use, uh, and that's what it gets into, like, there are concerns. If we are, for example, collecting data, um, that's the fear that many people have with all, all of this data, what happens to my own personal identity and, and so forth. So it touches upon those common, uh, uh, the modern issues within computer science.
Or at least that section of the course.
Well, it's, it's funny because there are schools that, um, there's a couple of magnet schools, for example, uh, that have made the introduction to computer science a mandatory course for every student in the high school.
Thank you.
Okay, Sean.
Yeah.
Karen?
I'm good.
Good. Pat?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, on to item four.
Do you have consensus?
Oh, I'm sorry, we, I thought, and just in on that.
Oh, there was, I'm sorry.
I didn't, I didn't say yes.
Sean had a question.
Okay, you said, did you say yes?
No, I didn't know.
Oh, okay.
I thought he asked a good.
Just do one more, one more side, yeah.
It started with Mike, he said yes, I think we did. Sean had a question, but wasn't clear.
You're good.
Missed the end of that.
Yeah, I, yes.
Okay, so good, no, they got it, you're good, you're good. I just wanted to make sure.
Rob? Do it again.
Let me do it again? Yes.
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 Yes, we'll super confirm it.
All right.
Okay.
Um, so the next item that you have are the updates that we do annually of the strategic plan. So these are here not to present to each one, but to, I know that you've, uh, had a chance to take a look at them, if there are any questions. Um, I would like to thank all of the staff, Mr. Mancusi, who is responsible for the district climate, uh, who does a great job, um, and we thank him. Uh, we have communication and community and partnerships, which I have to give the credit to my colleague who is on, in recuperation mode, Cindy Lavalette. Um, and then curriculum instruction, of course, Carrie, and then our maintenance, which, or facilities comes from Mark DePulis, so, um, and technology from Care and Value. So.
I need a copy of that because it was not included in the electronic package.
Okay, you could have this one. Um, so again, these will get posted on the website, as we always do, as an update and all the family, uh, all the families, all the parents and staff that get involved with these documents is, um, also noteworthy that we continue to have the support of the community, um, as we move forward, so.
So, let's go.
Sure.
I did read through some of it, there's fifteen pages of it, but just on an overall basis, any significant changes to our strategic plan in this?
I don't think that you saw, we saw a lot of changes, I think that we're trying to stay the course, that we can move forward. I also think, I know in speaking with Cindy, based on their group discussion and other groups, everyone's very cognizant of the financial circumstances that we're facing in the future. So I think that while we don't wanna, we don't want to avoid moving the district forward, we also have to be realistic with how many moves we can make at one time. Um, but I think that the key thing is, we had a lot in here and I think we want to make sure that we say, stay as focused as possible so we could accomplish the things that we had set forth in doing.
Great, thank you.
So I just wanna thank Rob, because I didn't get a chance to do last time, for the update on the climate survey. Um, that he gave us, I guess, a couple of weeks ago in our packet. Um, and I'm looking forward to looking at that in conjunction with the strategic plan, because I think it'll be very insightful.
Absolutely, and Rob is gonna be leading a workshop with our administrators. You're on the twenty-second, right?
Yes.
I think you are, um, and he's gonna be doing, um, some work with the focus monitoring, um, and then all of our administrators, their school improvement plans with Rob's, you know, data analysis that he did with Melissa, that's gonna help, it'd be infused into their str- uh, their school improvement plans as well as using NEAS report for the high schools, as well as using the, the, um, district report card, school report card, um, all of those things. Um, but we cannot thank Robin up.
In terms of district climate, in terms of those results you got, there's a lot of information there, so.
There is.
I'm glad you got that.
I liked it, and it's good.
But it, it really ties in well to what our focus has been, and that's really on building social, emotional, behavioral capacities in, in our students and our staff's ability to manage that, we spent a lot of work on that.
Karen?
Uh, one of the things that I found interesting was under the facilities and the safety guidelines, that, this looks, uh, very interesting. The risk management and mock OSHA inspections conducted annually. I think that can only prepare us, uh, for, uh, if there are concerns or looking at safety issues, we can, um, ensure a safer workplace and, and make sure that we have an increased level of preparedness. So I think that's, is that in concert, uh, to a certain extent with the town risk manager, how is that going to be implemented?
We'll be, we'll be working with the town risk manager, this is an initiative that, uh, Mark had put forth with his team. Um, it also complements the work that we do with tools for schools.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they, and you, the, well, it's twice a year that they do the reports following in the spring. Um, so they were looking at taking it to the next level, um, but he'll be working with Kurt Triever.
It can only benefit us.
Thank you.
Anything else, folks? Should we take consensus?
Mike? Yes.
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 Yes, I couldn't see that we needed to.
Oh, adjust.
No, it's fine. It's that, it's all good, it's all good.
All right.
Doesn't hurt, doesn't hurt. And we included Amanda that time, so that was good.
Okay, so, our last item, and, uh, thank, I had requested this be put on the agenda, thank you, was, um.
Sorry, Jeff.
That's all right, that's okay.
Just show, might didn't get the, um, results.
Okay. Um, a discussion on adjustment of the middle school and high school curriculum regarding its application to future careers. And, again, I had requested this, just to throw it out as a, for conversation. But it seems to me our economy is changing so quickly and, and the types of jobs are correspondingly changing so quickly. That, and, as I mentioned last time, I really fear and think there's gonna be just two kinds of jobs out there when our students are in, into their careers. And unfortunately, it's gonna be, the two types are gonna be minimum wage jobs and skill-based jobs. And maybe, you know, a generation ago, the skill-based jobs applied to just a portion of the, of the student population. Now I really need to believe it, it's gonna need to apply to everybody. And I'm wondering if maybe we should have this, I know we have guidance counselors and we have now have career, um, uh, career planning people, which is, which is great. That presentation I thought was great a couple of weeks ago. But I'm, I'm wondering now if it should be embedded in every course, so that students see how what they're learning applies to opportunities in the future. And I think, you know, of course, with most other things, if they can apply it, it's gonna hold their interest better and they're probably gonna learn it more effectively. And it seems to me that it's also very important that our educators see these, this as well, again, because they've changed so much. So I'd just like to throw that out there as a, as a thought for you folks, not for any action to be taken tonight, or, but just as a, as a thought. And I, I, I saw an article this morning's paper that, um, that I thought was relevant to this, is how, how jobs are changing. And, uh, it was in the, actually, it was in the Haven, uh, in the Hartford, I'm sorry, the Meriden, uh, Record Journal. And it was about United Technologies unveiling their, uh, a new R and D center. And it, uh, and they're calling it the innovation hub, and a couple of parts in, in the article say that one of the keys that will make, uh, United Technology successful over the coming years is innovation and always being on the leading edge of science and technology. Right? Um, and, and as I'm sure we all know, it's the largest employer in Connecticut and they're one that's committed to stay in Connecticut. Um, and actually, they're looking for loads of people right now. Their, um, their backlog is now out nine years for airplane engines. It's amazing. And, um, so anyway, it, it says, the focus of the, the center is to advance technology initiatives in, and I just mentioned this for the breadth of, of, of jobs out there. Aerospace, manufacturing, materials, robotics, um, commercial building. And, um, and then it talks about the, the additive, um, manufacturing center that's part of it. And I thought this one would be applicable of an interest as well. Enables collaboration, accelerating progress in advanced manufacturing, supply chain, another big area. Manufacturing operations, robotics, automation, business models, environmental science, and sophisticated measurement systems. I mean, that's just a whole array of different careers for, you know, people at all different levels of, of education. But if they haven't mastered the fundamentals, they're not gonna be able to do any of these. Um, so, and then they even talk a bit about robotics, you know, the big fear is that it's gonna replace people. And I thought this was interesting, it's the last item I'll quote from this, but it says, the next generation of robotics um, would, will adjust one of the biggest frontiers, humans collaborating with robotics, to have robots work seamlessly with people and collaborating, uh, teaching to have same intuition as humans. As to potential job losses, um, this UTC spokesman said, there are, there are big, there are better and higher level things for people to do. And there's a number of, a tremendous number of positions for those people out there. So anyhow, so just wanted to share those thoughts and, um, you know, and perhaps have, be considered for, for future curriculum.
No, I, I appreciate that, and if I can get a copy of that article, I'd appreciate.
Oh, sure.
That too. Um, the thing that I wanted just to connect with that and just as an invitation, and I'll send something out to all of you. Uh, the week of July seventeenth, uh, we will in this room be putting together from, I think it's, I wanna say eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. Um, we had talked about it through the budget process, looking at our structure of our middle school and high school, not necessarily getting into the curriculum pieces, but looking at program, looking at offering, um, how we run our schools in terms of that level to look at efficiency and effectiveness. Um, I know that we've been asked many times about our two high schools, can we handle two high schools, do we need two high schools, all that conversation. So trying to be proactive, as I said, through the budget process, so this should be no surprise to anyone that we wanted to have meetings this summer um, from a diverse group of people, so we have solicited parents, uh, we put out an all-call email to high school parents, middle school parents. So there wasn't a selected group where people were asked, it was, you know, people, um, got, all had an opportunity, we have some teachers from each level each day. So it's twenty people a day, so there's two teachers from middle school, high school each day, there's two parents from middle school, high school each day, there's an administrator from each, each day. There's students, two students from each level each day, uh, there's community partners like Park and Rec, SCOW, Family Youth and Social Services. Um, you know, different representatives there, there's alumni, so we're going for alumni from both high schools to be part of the conversation and then central office, and then I've left spaces for board members. So, um, what we're gonna do is in this room, kind of talk about what are the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, pulling some of that information, but really having an open agenda. There's no decisions that will be made, it's just data collection. Um, we'll capture it using our technology that we have, and then what I'll do is I'll code it with Carrie over the summer and share that with you, uh, most likely in August. And then based on that, we could all determine together what the next steps are.
I'm not too sure I follow what the objective is.
The objective is to look at how we presently run, how we presently function at middle school and high school level and how could we be more effective and potentially more efficient. Uh, because we can't continue to do what we've always done, um, because we know that ultimately there's gonna be financial challenges that we're gonna face. And along the way, some of the things that we've been really trying to get at, some of the career pathways that Jay just talked about, it's very difficult to do in the fashion that we've always done it. So we want to just hear from people from the community as to what ideas they may have, just have a conversation. Well, I'm not saying it's not good enough, this is not about good enough, this is being better, and this is also being more efficient. Because right now, I think we, we have duplication of a lot of efforts that we financially are probably not gonna be able to do. And so like we were fortunate this year, the work that we did at central office last year, um, working with all the union leaders, one of which is in the audience tonight, um, from the Para Educator Union, um, we had already identified areas that we could be efficient in. So this budget process this year was pretty much done. Um, we had done that proactively, we had worked with all the levels, we had surveyed all staff, so there were no surprises when our budget came out. Um, I think that unfortunately, as we've talked about, and I've said this publicly at the town council meetings both times, even at board meetings, that we need to start thinking about what else can be done. Um, if, unless we just wanna, and I know we don't, so this is not the plan, uh, for anybody, is that we just don't wanna go in and say, well, we have to just cut this number of teachers, this number of whomever, we wanna be strategic. So what we need to do is we need to have this conversation, not to say that anything's gonna happen in two thousand eighteen, nineteen or twenty, we just need to be proactive. Um, so, you know, we could look at, like we did last time, short-term goals, midterm and long-term. So what short-term things can we do that potentially could be helpful as we move forward? What are some of the midterm, maybe three to four years from now? What are some of the long-term beyond that, five to ten years? So there's nothing gonna come from this meeting that'll be saying, this is what we're doing. Um, because first of all, it's a different group of people every day, so we're just gonna be collecting data, but just to hear what people are talking about and what their thoughts might be, we might decide not to do any of them. But I just don't wanna, you know, when we get into the budget season and if we get, you know, the way it looks, I, I, I don't think the numbers are gonna be higher than what we got this year, I think it's gonna be lower. You know, we're gonna be looking at a deficit, or I shouldn't say deficit, a gap of, of potentially anywhere from seven hundred and fifty thousand to one point two million. So we need to start thinking now, unfortunately, proactively, so we're not sitting, you know, and saying to ourselves, oh my gosh, that equates to this many teachers. Do we raise class sizes, do we cut this, do we cut that? Are there things that we could do that'll make us even better than we are? But in the process, also be, make us a little bit more streamlined in our functions. Because we have, I mean, clerical this year, they've been, you know, that's the group that got hit the most. We've really, really, um, you know, we appreciate their support, I know it's very difficult for them. Um, but, you know, we, so that's a union and that's a place that, you know, that's, we're there, where there's not much we could do there. Para educators have already been, as we know, last year, they were an area, um, that we had to reduce. Um, you know, we've looked at our facilities, we looked at our other, um, services, so we just, it's just nothing more, Mike, than just to try to be proactive. I'm not saying that there's gonna be anything that's gonna come from it that's gonna amount to anything, but I just feel that I'd rather be ahead of the curve and worst case scenario, nothing comes of it, and even, best case scenario, even if one thing comes of it, um, we could at least have those conversations. So it's the week of the seventeenth, Monday through Friday, you only, if you wanna come, you don't have to come the whole day, um, or the whole time, and some people I know will be elsewhere. Um, but, um, but the thing is that, um, you know, if you wanna come by, just let me know, and I'll send something out as a reminder too, and if you. And we'll go from there.
I think, Mike, it's a, it's a real good idea because this whole thing financially, we know, is changing. So we have a strategic plan now that, that is to move the, uh, the orga- the, the school system forward. And we start off with the, uh, with the, as-is.
The sustain.
The sustain. Uh, but it's, there's a good chance that we're not gonna have funding even to maintain that, so then what do we do? And how do we at least maintain the services when we no longer have the funds, possibly have the funds to do it? And that's why I think it's valuable to take a fresh look.
That's what kind of bothers me about this.
No, and, and-
In fact, I, I know we have to do that, I know it's down the pike, we have to worry about money, but to me, it becomes a sad thing, that we, that's, that's what drives this kind of stuff.
You know, I, I, and that's-
And that's why I interpret.
And I, and I understand that, and I'm sorry if I miss, didn't explain it well, that's not, that's not my intent. My intent-
I know what it is, but that's why I'm interpreting.
No, and I, and I appreciate that, so I just-
I don't want it to go that way.
No, no, the, the situation is that we need to always look to improve what we're doing. Perfect example, Mike, is that we tried to, you know, we could've tried three years ago, to try to have the nursing program at both high schools. And we made a deliberate point to say, no, we weren't gonna do that, we were gonna have it at one school and have a state-of-the-art facility. If we tried to do it at both high schools, we would've never been able to fund the room that we have, I mean, the donations would've never been for two schools. So the idea is that that was in the best interest of students. I mean, that graduation last week was amazing. When you saw that full stage at Sheehan, you know, we used only, we only had to do it in the past in the library, remember, we used to do it in the media center? Now we have a full stage of kids who are getting their CNA certificate. So that was an example where we didn't cut, we didn't cut anything. We increased capacity, but we did it in a more efficient manner. So that's the type, those are the types of things that myself, as, you know, instructional leader of the district, that's what I'm looking for. I'm not looking for cost savings measures in the sense that we're trying to, you know, the end of the day is to see that we saved five hundred thousand dollars, or a hundred thousand dollars, or ten dollars. It's just to do it more efficiently and effectively. And I think that's really what we've been hearing even from our teachers, in terms of when they look at their courses, and, you know, being able to run certain courses at one school but not at other school, well, you know, there, our teachers, that's, that's a challenge, and why are we able to do that? So, but I could understand, I totally understand, and I hear what you're saying, that we don't want it to look, nor should it feel that way about money. It should be about creating, providing a better resource for students, a better service.
Yeah, if I can just throw to an example, that I just thought of as we did that. So let's say that, that we had a reduction in funding and couldn't sustain our services, then to carry a course at both schools like that, maybe it's done through, through video.
Very welcome.
So it's, right, so it's interactive at both schools in one class, one instructor. I mean, I think that's why you wanna think these things through and get all the ideas out there that you can, because there might be a bunch of things like that that enable us to, to move the system forward when the finances aren't moving with us.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm obsessed with efficiency, that's all I do at my job. And so it often does equate to cost savings, but it's also, you know, equated to a better quality of life for like my coworkers. So I think it could help with, you know, the students, the quality of education, if we're able to find efficiencies, and including the students is key. I love that you're having two students participate too, because, you know, with the, the food share table, that was something that came from a student. So like the things that are going on, you know, in these young people's minds, they might have great ideas that, you know, maybe you or I might not think of, and that could come up through like a brainstorm, through one of these, you know, conversations.
And the key word that I start with, and I always end with, with this, is effectiveness. It's, it's, efficiency is sometimes an outcome, but it's about increasing infect, effectiveness for the adults, for the students, for the families. You know, it's, that's, that's what we continue to have to do. So again, there might be nothing that comes of this, there might be something, it's just that we have, it, it begs a conversation. Because if we continue, you know, to want to maintain the high-level programming we have, but also have an opportunity to expand it, I mean, we heard about, you know, obviously we don't have Java, I'm assuming that at some point we'd like to implement a Java class. So we need to think about, well, what does that look like? Is that part of a pathway? What are those, we have great, we have great CTE courses in our schools, but we haven't clearly necessarily defined pathways for those. So do we wanna hear from people about, well, what would that look like? How does that feel as a school district if we have defined pathways? So again, I, I don't, I do respect what you're saying, Mike, it does feel like, okay, we're trying to, you know, solve the problem that we don't even know we have yet, number one, which might be financially, but that, the whole idea for me is that it's not about, when I said we were doing a SWOT analysis, it's not that one of the weaknesses is lack of money. It's gonna be weaknesses in terms of, or opportunities for growth, because we need to create more rigorous programming, or more opportunities for students.
So I think even, well, this year we know that we weren't able to include any of the strategic-
Correct.
-objectives in the budget, and I think it might've been the same last year, right?
No, last year we were.
We did.
Yeah, we were very fortunate last year.
But this year we weren't, so if, if there was a different way of doing some of this, maybe we, we wouldn't be able to.
I mean, a perfect example of something that I know we've always talked about, and, and we're proud because we still have it in our district, is, you know, the, the step program. And I know that, and I just wanna say the reason why I bring this up, for two reasons. First of all, we're very proud to have it, and secondly, I do wanna go on TV right now, and also, if you didn't read my Monday memo, we had the, out of six top awards awarded in the national convention this weekend, Wallingford took home three of the six. The top prize went to Audrey Larson, who's a Dag Hammershaw Middle School student, eighth grade. She got up to a fifteen thousand dollar grant to actually go to patent-
Wow.
-on her product. And so, and then Drew Biller, who also, she won the highest prize in her area. Drew is, is an incredible young lady. All, you know, they, the students, I mean, it's amazing, three of the top six awards went to Wallingford Public Schools. So, you know, we're very fortunate that we're able to sustain those programs that allow us to provide those opportunities for those students. So, you know, we're very fortunate. So, well, we're efficient because remember, yeah, I did, Mike, I, I inherited the ears from my mother. The thing is though, I didn't even need that.